Okay.
After your presentation is over, feel free to leave city hall, go on with your evening.
There's some like I I clocked it, it's like two point two miles away.
No, I uh no expectations for anybody to stage. Not that door, uh leave that door.
So out that way, okay.
That's not good if I'm.
All right, here we go.
All right, we're ready to start.
Thank you, John. Okay, well, it is uh six o'clock on Thursday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, and I will call the City of Lacey work session to four. It appears that we have an agenda. Can I get a motion for set agenda?
Move to approve agenda as polished.
Is a movement seconded? Uh all in favor, please. Is there any discussion about movement in the second? Nothing. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Oh, okay, so i- initially, I wanted to make sure that I I said that um the mayor is absent tonight. He has an excuse absence, and council members Cox and Stedman will be joining us remotely. I'd like to be able to see them on the screen as much as possible if uh just in case they have comment um during during any kind of a presentation. I don't know if we can, if we have. Can we do different things with different screens? Or is or is it a dedicated to to both screens?
Yeah, it's going to be mirrored the same on both screens, so.
Okay, all right, good enough. As long as I I can see if they have a question, I think we'll be fine. Uh and with that, uh our first agenda item uh is our twenty twenty-three community development block grant presentations, uh which will be presented by Jenny Kelly-Fung, our Assistant City Manager.
Well, thank you, and uh good evening, Deputy Mayor and House Members. Um just as kind of a brief overview, uh the City of Lacey, it is uh the city's turn to receive uh community development block grant dollars as part of the Thurston County Community Development Block Grant Consortium. And so the city had solicited for uh applications and proposals to use the funds. Uh we reviewed the uh proposed uh applications at the April thirteenth uh twenty twenty-three work session for an initial review, and as part of that review, the uh council requested that we hold presentations on affordable housing capital projects. And so tonight, we've invited all of uh the in organizations that provided proposals uh with affordable housing capital projects uh to present on their proposal and answer any questions that the council may have. Uh for the structure of this evening, uh we planned for a brief presentation, so about five minutes, and then allowing for uh five minutes of question and answer. Now certainly, if that can be flexible, uh the council's got more questions than five minutes will allow. Um and then after uh the presentations tonight, the idea would be that we would come back to council for further discussion on uh funding moving forward. Uh so with that, I'd like to uh turn it over to our first presenter unless there's any questions from the council before I get started. And that would be uh Shawna Dutton with Habitat for Humanity.
Well, I just want to say thank you for inviting us to come and talk about our program and our proposal. I'm Shawna Dutton, I'm the Director of Development with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. I've been there for about um nine years this August, so like lifer, I guess is what you'd call it. So um what we are proposing is uh we have launched in twenty twenty gave us the ability to launch a new program called the Critical Home Repair. And what that is is servicing our community on um slide are medium, low to moderate income homeowners. And what we saw was a real need within our community, mostly elderly, veteran, or disabled homeowners that were living in homes that were not suitable to a decent standard of living. Um so we start always with the why question. Why do we need to launch a new program? Is there a study for this? And what we found was that um with our critical home repair program, we were talking to homeowners who had normalized unhealthy or unsafe living standards. We were talking to moms who were taking showers with their children at gyms, drinking through a fire hose, um had a previous house fire, but insurance for had an exemption, didn't cover it, and now they're living without power um and living in a home in such disrepair that and unable to afford the repairs through traditional um construction and contractors. And so we did launch this critical home repair program and hope to continue to working within the City of Lacey to expand it and provide these critical home repairs. All right, so what are critical home repairs? It is not repainting a house. For us, it's accessibility. So right now, we have a veteran um gentleman who has a standard bathtub shower. But um in his active line of duty, he has lost a leg. And so getting in and out of that shower has become um a serious challenge for him in doing basic hygienic daily tasks on his own. And so what we'd like to do is go in there and install an ADA shower throughout. So it's accessibility, it's roofs, it's windows and doors and essential heating units. So we're making sure that these homes and these neighborhoods stay safe and healthy for the occupants that are in there. Who's eligible for this program? So who we're working with is low to median income homeowners. They make between thirty and eighty percent of the area in median income within Thurston County.
You said thirty?
Thirty to eighty percent. Our target is sixty percent, but um there's need everywhere. So um they have to have an income, they have to have a willingness to partner. So Habitat for Humanity is built on self-help housing, which means that they com- they commit to doing sweat equity hours of working alongside Habitat and our volunteers to either work to repair their own home with us or commit volunteer hours throughout doing that with our organization. And then, of course, they have to live um within Thurston County. And if this grant were approved within the City of Lacey, would be as well. Okay, um so the need, um we received over seventy-four calls and emails just in this last eight months um from Thurston County residents, and they're coming from neighbors, they're coming from parents, they're coming from the residents themselves requesting assistance. Uh we have a proven place and process. We work with uh we're an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International. This program has been in existence for eight plus years. Um so we're working off an existing structure and then um moder- uh modifying it to work within our community. And then our staff, we have an excellent staff with over a hundred and thirty-eight years combined of construction experience of building, new construction, repairing, and um doing doing this work in our community. Um and then our goal is to complete ten projects and um or we have completed ten projects in the last year, two in the City of Lacey. We have five currently in process. And then on average, our uh job costs are fourteen thousand dollars. And that is due to the fact that the majority of uh repairs that come to us are roof replacements in Washington State with the high moisture content, and a roof replacement leads to high mold, high water, all sorts of issues. And so that is a hefty repair that is being requested, and we're in place and able to do that. So that's why that job cost is usually so high. And um I just wanted to end with one story of we uh recently came in and restored the water, running water to a home with a single mom with a five-year-old daughter. And um this mother-daughter, they were, they had a gym membership, and they were going and making sure that, you know, regular showers were happening. Five-gallon jugs of water were coming from the local grocery store, but drinking out of a a a garden hose and um living without running water in your house with a young child is not what we want to see from this community. This was a full-time working mother um with a beautiful daughter doing an excellent job, but unable to make that initial investment in repairing their home. Um by partnering with Habitat, they were able to take up just a huge burden of cost off the upfront, partner, do that sweat equity, and we were able to restore running water and improve that quality of life for not only that family. We like to say, yes, we only helped that one family with the repair, but the ripple effect of restoring somebody's mental health and lowering stress that has an amazing ability to affect any, you know, customer service representatives, teachers, employers. All of that has that big ripple effect in our community, and I think only makes it stronger.
Did anybody have any questions? Please.
Just one question. Does this program cover appliances?
No, it does not.
I know that living without a stove or refrigerator, a refrigerator can also have a big impact.
It can. We we really hope that by running our two retail locations, we do have two Habitat stores within the county, that people are able to provide that low-cost, quality, affordable appliances um in that manner.
Can you tell us, Mr. Vasquez, there um for community development block grant dollars, there are some limitations to equipment purchases?
That would include refrigerators, obviously, too, right? Because that's, you know, food and all the essentials you need to make it through the week.
Yeah, and to be clear, we would do, um so if it was an electricity issue of being able to have running power to operate that refrigerator, that is a critical home repair that we would take on. But replacing the actual refrigerator would not qualify under our program.
What what about HVAC system?
Yep, we're actually partnering um through a heat pump campaign and 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 working on that exact solution.
Anybody else?
Just you you talked about sweat equity, which I think is great. So how do how do you equate that? Is there like certain number of hours equal dollar amount or?
Um it's not related to a dollar amount. What we ask is for eight hours of sweat equity with our uh critical home repair clients. Um and so we think that's a doable amount, and what we hope is that it's them working alongside us on the critical home repair and learning how we came in, made the repair, and make them stronger homeowners. There's several ways to accomplish that, but we make sure that one sweat equity is beneficial to our organization, beneficial to the homeowner, and beneficial to the community.
So for those who are not aware, the median in- uh income in Thurston County is eighty-one thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars. So uh if you're if you're looking for people between thirty and and eighty percent of that number, you're looking for people who are making twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to sixty-five thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars. But it's she said that her target was sixty percent, so I would imagine that would be people making fifty K or less.
Seniors on Social Security. Oh, that's that's a lot of seniors on Social Security when one asks passes and home up.
I had a question about, um you guys have your store over there in Olympia and and have donated. You guys stop taking plans. Uh we won't get into it.
We can, we can on later date.
We can get into it later. Uh so when 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 supplies are needed, are you guys able to buy from yourself?
No, we don't. We don't ever do that. Um so we like to keep the business side of the Habitat stores a little separate from the charity side, and that is also to ensure warranties and quality of goods. So if you're donating a doorknob to the Habitat store, that doorknob is not being put in a critical home repair or into a Habitat home. We are in both purchasing and making smart purchases with community partners to make those those new construction or repair projects happening. And in any case, like, we always want to make sure that our work is is above the standard. And so new products and um warrantying, making sure they're void of defects. If they're donated, we don't know the history of the life before the product.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so that's just for us to come down and buy.
Yeah, um and, you know, the proceeds of the Habitat stores build at least three homes a year as well as cover a hundred percent of the overhead costs of running the organization. So the stores are the engine that drives the affordable house building um entity that Habitat for Humanity is in our community.
You said the profits from those stories built three houses a year?
On average, at least three homes. And pays a hundred percent of the overhead. It's a pretty incredible program.
Really is.
And it keeps items out of landfills, um keeps that recycling and that and then forefront.
Does anybody else have anything?
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much for the opportunity to be here. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, not a problem. We're glad that you came down. I mean, when we initially looked at this and we and we thought, you know, we have decision to make, we really need to, um we would like to hear what you have to say uh before we make any kind of call on your behalf. Uh because sometimes we can see enough on paper to 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 make a decision, but but this council is a little more we we like to make better decisions than that. So it was just kind of one of those, let them come down, let them talk, let them, let's let's hear what they have to say. So we definitely appreciate you being here tonight.
We appreciate the opportunity. Anytime. Thank you again.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
We can turn it over to our next presenter, Kathy Johnson from Rebuilding Together.
Thank you again for having us here tonight. And we also have a critical repair program, but it's a little bit different from habitats. So our organization has been helping homeowners in Thurston County since two thousand and three. Um since that time, we repaired um over three hundred and forty homes and helped more than five hundred and forty people live in safe and healthy homes in the community. And seventeen percent of these homeowners have lived in the City of Lacey. Uh for the people that we help are fifty-five homeowners. And we help people who are disabled, people who are sixty-two and older, military veterans or families with young children. So as long as you fit in one of those categories, uh you can apply for services. And our program is a little bit different from habitats in that we don't have a minimum income requirement. So whether they're making five thousand dollars a year or ten thousand dollars a year, um that's the the big difference between us and habitats. There's no income requirement. Um and the median income for people who apply to our program is just over fourteen thousand dollars a year. So we're seeing people who are, you know, living on the edge. Um and many of our homeowners are typical homeowner is a single woman, never been married, doesn't have any family. She's in her late sixties. She lives in a manufactured home park with a park rent of about six hundred dollars a month and an income of about twelve fifty a month. So you can see that there's very little area there for her to afford any repairs. And so when they contact us, there's usually a lot of deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. Um go ahead, next slide, please. And go ahead, one more. So those are the demographics of the people that we help, and obviously, they could fall in more than one category. They can be a senior and disabled and a military veteran. Um most of our clients are uh sixty-two and older and disabled. We don't have a lot of families with young children because i- if you're low income, you probably can't afford to buy anything. So we help more of the aging population. Go ahead, please. Are the typical repairs that we do, um heating and plumbing, so our most requested are anything to do with safety items. So grab bars, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, CO2 detectors, um and secure handrails. And then the next one after that is typically some sort of ADA modification. That could be a high-profile toilet, a wheelchair ramp. We often get people who have fallen, and they're in the hospital, they've broken their hip, they're now on a wheelchair, and they can't get into their home because they have stairs. And so they're contacting us saying, you know, I can't come home until I have a wheelchair ramp. And so that's where the critical repair program really comes into play because, you know, they can't get in their house. Um so wheelchair ramps are really important, and then plumbing leaks. We have, that's probably our third requested item, and, you know, very expensive because it's probably been leaking for a while. So typically speaking, we're replacing not only the hot water tank, but the flooring underneath it because it's been leaking for a while. So we're repairing the subfloor, the flooring, and then maybe a little bit of the drywall if it's really been leaking for a while. So those are typical. Um eighty percent or so of our repairs are done by our skilled volunteers. So we're really just paying for the materials involved. Um we're very lucky to have that, and we've got some great supply partners who will give us great discounts on things. We get gift cards from Bose every year. They're another great partner. So we're really lucky in that regard. Um so typical projects that we do, um I have a similar story to to uh Habitat in that we have, we're now working with a company that will cut into the bathtub. So instead of having to rip the whole thing out, if the person is semi-disabled but doesn't need a seat in the bathtub, we're cutting into the tubs they can walk in. So we just finished helping a veteran who we provided him with a wheelchair ramp, and we cut into his tub. And so he can now walk into his tub. So he literally had a friend who was paying for a hotel room for him once a week that had an ADA modified um bathroom so he could shower. I mean, that's, you know, pretty, pretty extreme, but he had a friend who was willing to do that. And so, you know, that's, you know, fairly typical for some of our clients, as they haven't been able to bathe, they've been doing sponge baths or going, you know, somewhere else, a family home. So the repairs that we do help really our most uh low-income homeowners. We don't require them to pay any portion of their repairs, nor do we require any s- sweat equity and other another difference, not right or wrong, just different programs. And we refer clients back and forth. Uh sometimes Habitat has a grant that we don't have or they've got a little bit more money in their grant. So we'll say, hey, can you, you know, help this homeowner, and then, you know, we'll help this homeowner. Um so that's been a great partnership of of our agencies. So there's certainly room for both of us to help people in Lacey. Yeah, there's a huge need, you know, and especially anybody who's sixty-two and older and disabled. Many of our clients have both that physical disability and an emotional disability, which makes it difficult for them to, you know, ask for help or, you know, run their household very well. So example, in Lacey, a couple of years ago, we had a homeowner who had who had literally been living with a tree to root for her roots for three years before she reached out. And so we were able to work with a contractor partner to remove that tree from her roof. Um but we could not afford to afford a new roof for her, and so we paid for a contractor partner, the perfect. So for three years, she'd been living with, you know, water, snow, critters coming into her house. And if we had money like this, we could, you know, fix that rooms. And she'll be one of those clients that would, assuming we get some money from Lacey, that we would go back and see if she did it. Questions for me?
Oh, uh I, yeah, as you were talking, I was thinking, um that's awesome. And how are they, is most of your stuff word of mouth, or is are you advertised somewhere?
So we, most of our um homeowners find us through senior services. Uh we get referrals from home healthcare agencies, we get referrals from Habitat, we'll get them from, they may call the Chamber. They may actually call the City of Lacey and say, you know, where, you know, where can I go for help? Uh we do have um a website uh that they can also find us on. And then, for example, this last year, we had CDPG money from the City of Olympia as well as Tumwater, and the initial applications coming in were a little slow. So we worked with the Thurston County Assessor's Office to identify low-income homeowners. In those areas, we sent them out postcards and had no problem getting applications after that. So, for example, in um two thousand one, we received fifty-seven applications. And two thousand twenty-two, by August, we had received eighty-seven applications. And we actually had to quit taking applications in August because we didn't have the capacity to serve that many people monetarily or, you know, in in the office. Uh so we, you know, we're slowly working through that um right now. So we helped um fifty-nine homeowners this last year, so we're really, you know, plugging away at at helping people.
That sounds like a really steady stream of volunteers.
We are really lucky. We are really lucky. We could not do what we do without the volunteers.
Would it make sense for the two of you to merge?
Yes and no. I mean, I, we serve a little bit different clientele and that our, you know, income limit is lower than Habitat. Um and I think we serve a little bit more marginalized community. I think Habitat with the sweat equity and the homes that you're doing, um our clients tend to be a little bit more physically and mentally impaired. And so sometimes it's very difficult for them to get through an application process and and to provide that kind of of uh contact with Habitat.
Like sweat equity would be kind of out of the question for them.
Right, right. And Habitat, I think, you know, works with people in that regard, but I think we serve just a little bit different community in that area. But we're both very, very important to the community.
So uh it looks like your ask is not even really all that high.
We'll take more if you say. We never say no to money. We're always, we're always gabbing for as much money as you can. I should very good song and dance if necessary.
Well, it takes us to our uh third presentation, and I will uh turn it over to uh Shannon Micklich. Um with Homes First.
Hi, um thank you for having us here, and I'm Shannon Micklich. I am the Development Director at Homes First, and I've been there about three and a half years. However, Homes First has been in the community um thirty-three years. And grassroots grown right here in uh Thurston County and started with two homes, and now um we have uh fifty-one properties, a hundred and eighteen rental units, and um in Thurston and Mason Counties, so two in Mason, the bulk of it is in uh Thurston. And in Lacey, we own seventeen properties with thirty-six units um of affordable housing that house ninety-five Lacey residents. And um I guess we can go through more slides, but um so there's our our mission is we create and maintain safe, healthy, and affordable rental homes for those who need them most. What that doesn't say is it's long-term. I I don't want to use the word permanent, but it we have people staying there twenty, thirty years. So once they're uh have permanent housing, they're um more likely to stay. We have a very low turnover rate, one percent a year. So um the next. And so um we are one piece of the puzzle. Um Habitat, of course, talking a lot about Habitat tonight um does um, you know, purchase home homeownership, right? So not everyone is is it's possible to do that. And so uh we provide rental homes. And um so uh one of the main reasons that we're affordable rental is uh as you may or may not know, the average rent in Thurston County increased twenty-three percent uh between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-three, um while the median income only increased ten percent. So it is um incredibly expensive to rent. And the next slide, so um oh, takes the village, that's part of the, you know, pe- different pieces of the puzzle. And with the four hundred and fifty-five thousand in City of Lacey CDBG funding that Homes First requested in the grant application, we will provide additional low-income uh rental housing. So we will use this funding to support our ongoing addition of units. So what that means is the purchase of a home. We will leverage that funding with other funding to make that happen. And um there's some, so uh the funds leveraged include funding resources like the Housing Trust Fund, which supports our efforts uh currently, and Thurston County Capital Funding, which also supported our twenty twenty-two and twenty-three work. And uh the plan is to purchase a three-bedroom to four-bedroom home here in in Lacey, single-family home, and provide rental housing to Lacey residents with incomes of less than or equal to a fifty percent of AMI. And currently, um what we have, our tenants, residents, um all of our housing serves households with incomes at or below fifty percent of the median area income with eighty-five percent of our tenants living at thirty percent. So that's the extremely low income category, so um we have um safeguards and uh documentation in place that the residents we serve are indeed extremely uh low income, very low income. And um we will work, how we how we approach purchasing a home is that we don't have, although we serve different um populations, development, disabled, uh veterans, uh people exiting uh Western State, um youth, housing, uh families, we don't go with the approach of we are going to purchase a home for one particular population. We see what is available in the market that fits the funding, and then we uh we make that happen with rehabilitation of the home rehab and um and renovations to it. Um so that we can be flexible with the funding. And the reason why as well is that uh the need's so great in all the categories that um, you know, it 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 works that way. And so um if we can, there are so many slides, right? So we can go more. And so the one of the uh um the unique approach that sets us apart twofold, we're um we're scattered site housing. So if you go by Homes First, go drive by Homes First home, you wouldn't know it because it's integrated into the community. And um the other unique approach is that we partner with um other nonprofit organizations to kind of share the load, right? So we take what we do best, which is the housing and the maintenance and the continuation of that, uh serving our tenants uh with um partnering with um uh our long-time service providing partners such as Kokua Services, Family Support Center, Community Services, Youth Services, Safe Place. Um and then uh and that's how we make it work. And in twenty twenty-two, we added six homes, six more homes to our portfolio uh using that methodology. So um So, um, I guess we can go to the next slide. And, um, acquisition, how we do it, I already talked about that with, um, so, um, yeah, we, we leverage the public funds, which is CDBG and other funds. And we also have a mortgage partner, Only Fed, who, um, is our long, we only have mortgages through Only Fed. And, um, if we need to, we will, um, secure a mortgage on the property twenty percent. We don't like to do more than twenty percent, but that's how that is. And, um, there we go, next slide. And operations, how we do it. So our rent covers, uh, everybody pays rent, whether it's subsidized rent or, uh, unsubsidized rent. And, uh, but it's always affordable, uh, for their income. And we also do, uh, we have grants, we have fundraising. It's a complete puzzle, uh, you know, puzzle pieces that funds us. And then the next, um, slide is, uh, so some of our partners, we have, um, I talked a little bit about, um, developmentally disabled homes. We have thirteen, fourteen of those. We have Oxford Program Partners, which is the Oxford International, uh, for people exiting, uh, or for people, um, uh, working on addiction, uh, uh, challenges, the next slide. And, um, community youth, we have a couple of youth homes for fostered people exiting foster care and, um, some of our partners and, um, this project is a great fit for what Homes First has done for thirty-three years. Um, we, we use a combination of public and private funds and match them with donations and grants to acquire properties for the people in our community who struggle the most to find and retain budget-friendly rental housing. And we also believe that preserving already affordable homes ensures that the home stays affordable for the future forever for the community. We never sell the home, we never flip the home, stays in the affordable market forever. And, um, it, it, so, and that's it. Other, any questions? Yeah.
So some of the clients that are staying in your homes that are able-bodied, they're just, they're in a low-income situation. Is there, uh, an incentive for them to improve either work skills or some other means so that they can improve on their income level and make room for someone who is, in, in other words, is there an effort to do that to where they might be positioned to gradually move out and and because they're more financially stable and prepared to handle a market rate rent or or buy their own house? So that you can move someone else in that's that's low income?
That's a great question. Um, a lot of our population is not in that category that you talk about. However, since I've been there, uh, we've had one family a year move out and buy a home. So one just bought one in Chehalis and then so further, a little bit further south affordability. Someone else moved up into Kitsap Peninsula. Um, so it has happened twice since I've been there and that's a great. That's great. That's, yeah.
Be nice to see that, that number uptick. Yeah. So, so you've been there for how long?
Uh, three and a half years.
Three and a half years and so far you've seen two clients do that.
The majority are senior citizens living on Social Security or, um, the, um, you know, the Oxford Homes, that's part of that program. When, you know, they're, they're moving those in and out, whatever their program does. But as far as we're talking about, you're talking about Section Eight, single-family, uh, or, you know, homes, um.
People that have that might be in a bad place now, but have the potential to build their skill set or or improve their condition to where they can gradually move, uh, to, uh,
To market rate? No, it doesn't happen that often. So they can get a job that's pays market rate.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Grace.
So you said everyone does pay rent. Is it a percentage of income or how was your, how was that?
Yeah, it's not more than thirty percent of their income, whatever that may be. Yeah, so it's always kept affordable. Audit it once a year to make sure that it's all only up and up.
So when you're, when you're, um, when you're out in the market for, for, for properties, are you in the wholesale market or are you in the retail market?
No, it's the retail. Yeah, we have a, wait, I'm sorry.
You stick to the retail market?
We do and we, we have a, um, a real estate agent that works with us that identifies properties for us. And what we try to, that, um, can be slightly, can be renovated to be accessible, right? So we want to make them, um, uh, for, if you happen to be in a wheelchair or walk or something, but they're not so far gone, right? That they can't be renovated anymore. So they're usually not going to be the, the best of the best, you know, to compete with market buyers.
You guys put in an offer, compete with all the other owners?
We do, and it's a little bit at a disadvantage because we have a forty-five day, um, what is it called, a wait or, yeah, close, because we have to test for meth, which if you're buying a home, you don't think about that, but we've had a couple of homes that, three this year that we had to say.
That's a positive, huh?
Yeah, and we can't renovate that. It's just too not cost effective at all, but we want to make sure the home is safe. So.
Renovation on that's that expensive.
Oh, yeah.
No, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, how do you, lead base, you gotta be very careful how you approach it. How do you title the properties after you've acquired them?
Oh, my goodness, that's a good question.
Are they, are they titled into, are they titled in trust to, to the, or is it titled in a person's name or they?
They must be titled under Homes First and and the community, right? I mean.
You'd think. I was, yeah.
Yeah, so Homes First, is it an LLC?
No, it's a nonprofit, five hundred and three nonprofit. However, I look at it as we hold these homes in trust for the community, right? Right? They belong to the community because, uh, so not a single person.
But that's a good.
I assume it says Homes First on the title.
If you give, she gives you an address, probably good.
Right?
Other than that, is, is there any other questions from the council? I have, Tom, Tom Water chains are welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so it looks like this first.
We will be moving on to our, uh, remote presentations at this point in times with our two remote presenters. Um, and our first one is, uh, Stephen, uh, Elamy with Lehigh. Um, Stephen, are you there?
Hi, this is Sharon Lee.
Hi Karen.
Hi. Hi, um, I'm trying to double check if, um, Vicky is on too, Vicky Brand.
Does it look like, uh, Vicky is here? Jonathan, smoke Vicky.
Vicky, if you could pop up, you need to accept being promoted to a panelist.
And, um, Hannah? Hannah, are you there too?
They should both be coming in momentarily.
Oh, great. Thank you.
I'm here.
Vicky, thank you.
You bet. Maybe not a camera, but I'm here.
And.
I'm here too. I'm trying to figure out how to get my camera to work. Hold on just a second.
Well, I would, um, like to start with the presentation and then turn it over to, um, Vicky and Hannah. So I'm, um, Sharon Lee, Executive Director of the Low Income Housing Institute. And, um, we, um, really wish to thank the, um, City Council for all your support. Um, and I think I, just to give you a little background, um, we are a nonprofit housing organization and we do a lot of affordable housing from single-family homes to multifamily buildings. And then we also, um, serve, um, homeless people with hygiene needs, um, and urban rest stops where people can take showers, do their laundry at no cost. Um, there are too many people living, um, in shelters and also even if you're in a shelter, there may not be adequate, um, hygiene facilities or people who are living unsheltered or living in their cars. And then we also have pioneered the tiny house village model, um, and that's taken off throughout the country because of the crisis around homelessness. Next slide. So we have, um, a, a number of buildings in Thurston County and I'm sure you've seen, um, downtown, um, Olympia, we have, um, Billy Frank Junior Place where the city, um, sold the land to us and we have housing for families, young adults, people living with disabilities. And then we also have the Fleetwood Apartments, which houses many veterans, homeless vets. And that used to be a, um, telephone company switching station that we, um, that adaptively, um, you know, modified. And then, um, because of the, um, need for homeless housing, we worked with the city and the city transferred property to us for Unity Commons, which is the middle one. And that includes a shelter for interfaith works and then, um, permanent supportive housing above. And it's worked out really successfully. So the City, um, of Olympia has also, um, agreed to have us develop Phase Two, which is, um, the next phase. And then I think, um, many of you might have passed by Plum Street Village, which, which is the tiny house village on the former tree nursery site that the, um, City of Olympia has. Next slide. So in Lacey, um, we have Arbor Manor. Um, we've had this for many years and it's a shared single-family house for homeless women. And we have, um, homeless women from coordinated entry and we have onsite staff as well as, um, case management staff. So we're taking some, um, you know, single women who have been, um, homeless for chronically homeless in many cases. Um, and then I want, I want to thank you for your support for, um, Maple Court where, um, you know, um, the City of Lacey, Tom Water, Olympia and the county helped us purchase the, um, former Days Inn. And, um, that is, um, in the process of, um, I, I know we, you mentioned meth, right, um, the other presenter, but it's in the process. We're doing meth abatement and then we're gonna, um, have, um, homeless, um, couples, singles, people with pets, um, seniors, um, live there as a enhanced shelter. So next slide. So Magnolia Villa, I just want to, um, say something that, um, we actually purchased this because it was at risk of, um, being sold on the private market because the former owner wanted to get out of, um, the Section Eight contracts. So we know it's so important to keep and preserve existing housing, especially for, um, families with children. Um, so I will have, um, Hannah or Vicky, do you want to take this over?
I got that. Yeah, this, my name's Vicky. I am overseeing Magnolia Villa. It is, there's twenty-one units, they're two, three and four-bedroom townhouses. Um, these houses are subsidized by Housing of Urban Development. The tenant has older tenants were able to, um, I like this property because I have seen tenants here who have been able to raise their kids. Um, some of them have gone on to college, moved out and, you know, and started their own family. Um, if you could go to five, that goes into a little bit more. Thank you. So my, the property serves a diverse group of families. The families on average make less than thirty percent of the average median income, which if you were a family of four, the most you could make is thirty thousand, two hundred, thirty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars a year. Imagine trying to raise your family, send them to school. Um, and given what you needed on that, if you couldn't afford conventional housing, with it being subsidized by HUD, we do annual reviews, the rent's based on thirty percent of their adjusted gross income. Um, let's see, you could go down a little bit more and let's see, let me just move my notes. Um, I believe this is very important as it allows them to live in a clean and safe environment. And to, there's two families that I wanted to tell you about. They really didn't want their pictures. Um, just last year, a single father who's on disability, I would think it's around nine hundred a month. He has two young boys, the mother's out of the picture. He was living in a one-bedroom apartment with his mother and they were, um, about to have to move out because technically they weren't supposed to be there. Since moving into Magnolia Villa, um, they have accelerated in school. The children, they're really happy to have their own bedroom. They, they became, they've got an identity now, you know, as to compared to sleeping on a couch in a one-bedroom apartment. Um, and I have another tenant there that she is a single mother of two teenage daughters. Um, she's, she's a go-getter. She is a cancer survivor. Um, and she is now able, because she's a single parent of two children, she, with full custody, she's actually able to go back to school and is trying to save money to move out of the apartments to, um, to buy a house. Having been able to pay thirty percent of your adjusted gross, gross income in a safe, clean environment and to be able to just move on and do better things and and lead the way for your children, I think it means so much more. Next slide, please. Um, I, we, I've been down there for about six months. We've been working really hard on cleaning up Magnolia Villa. Um, financially, there really is only so much we can do at times, which is the reason that we're meeting today. Um, it is in real need of siding, repair, painting, gutters and downspouts. Um, I firmly believe that just because it's affordable housing doesn't mean it has to look like it. We have a landscaper that comes out once a week, maintenance picks up the grounds, we work with tenants. You know, there's a courtyard the kids can play. It's just, it needs to be a nice, safe place and that's really our goal for them. Next slide, please. Oh, wait, oh, okay, that would be, yes, that's the one. Thank you. I'd like to finish by saying thank you for giving us this opportunity to present this information with you. This grant will help us to continue to provide a clean and safe environment for families to live, raise their children and he'll help give them a good start in life as they grow. And again, I believe just because it's affordable, it doesn't have to look like it. Just that one of the other presenters made the comment that the houses are within the other communities and nobody knows. I think these kids should be able to have their friends come over and they live in an apartment, not a big deal. It shouldn't have to look like affordable. I believe this grant would help us help fine tune what we've been working really hard on. Um, that's what I have.
Thank you. Questions?
I'm just, I'm curious and I don't know if they'll know the answer, but not you might, Rick. When they do projects like this, for instance, that this, that repairs on this building, do they have to use prevailing contractors that are paying prevailing wage?
I'm, uh, defer that to Sharon and her team because with the nonprofit, I think they have a little different dialogue.
Yeah, it largely depends on the financing that we get. Um, in some cases, um, we pay, um, you know, residential prevailing wage. Um, it depends on if it's, um, federal funds or private funds or, you know, um, so we follow, we definitely follow what's required.
And that's, um, exactly what I think Sharon Lee just said. So that would be required to follow all federal standards for.
Which then would be prevailing wage. Okay. I, I was wrong. That, that would explain why the siding would be so expensive.
Oh, sorry about that. You're, you're right.
Outside of prevailing wage, it's really expensive.
Are there any other questions? Mike, are you still there? Okay. Maybe I'm muted. Okay. Well, uh, thank you guys so much for being here. You know, it's, it's, we haven't been able to actually put a face to a name for, I guess it's been about a year and a half, maybe two? Uh, since we have had, been having Lehigh conversations, since we've been kind of, I, I, okay, so it's new for me. I'm brand new. And so Sharon, it's finally, uh, nice to see you and, uh, Hannah, you too, and, uh, The Voice. Thank you so much for, for presenting. Um, I don't have any questions for you. Your, your, uh, your ask seems pretty straightforward and I, I understand what it is you're trying to do. Are you guys able to, like some of the other nonprofits, use volunteer hours or use volunteer, uh, work? For, for any of your, or is it straight up just, we have to go with the?
Well, some of the funding requires that we meet certain, um, standards. Um, and then, of course, I think, um, our, our site staff uses volunteers all the time in terms of, you know, landscaping, beautification, volunteer hours, um, tutoring, you know, I mean, there are other lots of ways volunteers interact with our residents. Um, I will say it's very interesting, you know, we've met so many, um, City of Lacey. We've met your, um, planning director, your fire, you know, official. We, it's, it's sort of like I've met the other side of, um, Lacey, right? Because of our work at, um, um, Days Inn and, you know, Maple, Maple Court. So it's, it's great, fi- finally to meet you two, all of you, because, you know, we've been, um, dealing with your staff and they've been absolutely wonderful, so supportive. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you, thank you. And it sounds like maybe because of the Davis Bacon Act, we have to adhere to some of those things.
Yes, we will get multiple, I mean, we assure you, we will get multiple, um, bids to make sure that, um, you know, um, the, whoever we pick is. You know, um the whoever we pick is competitive and qualified and licensed. Thank you.
Awesome. And part of it though is as originally depends, because it can get different funding sources, but soon as like federal dollars or you know, public dollars go in, then it takes the whole project into.
That was what I was asked. That's what I kind of assumed, but I wasn't positive at that hour. I know anything we do, obviously.
Okay, we you know, you guys are gonna be surprised, but we are actually on schedule. So back to Shannon.
Well, that takes us to our last presentation uh for tonight, and that is uh Jacob Polowitz uh from uh Option Housing.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can hear you fine, Jacob. Yes.
Awesome. I really appreciate uh letting me do this virtually. My wife and I are expecting uh a new son in the next few days, so. Staying close by is is definitely a plus in our household, so. Uh I I'm looking forward to meeting you all in person and I thank the city of Lacey and the city council members very much. For the opportunity to speak about options for supported housing and their affordable housing project proposal. Uh my name is Jacob Polowicz.
Real quick.
Thank you. Anyone who uh has had children probably knows what that waiting game feels like and I I'm in the midst of it. Uh but looking forward to still uh being able to present to you and and really appreciate that opportunity, so. Uh like I said, my name is Jacob Polowicz. I'm one of the housing developers for Options for Supported Housing. Uh this is their first opportunity that they've taken to uh potentially have a project in the city of Lacey, so. Love to tell you a little bit about Options for Supported Housing. Um they have for the last forty years supported uh individuals with. Um in the intellectual and developmental disabilities and for the last twenty five years, they've been at the forefront. For developing affordable housing for extremely low income individuals with ADD. Um currently, they have over a hundred properties nationwide that provide affordable housing. Including fifty two in Washington State and seven of those are here in Thurston County. Um uh those fifty two houses provide housing for uh approximately one hundred and seventy five people with extremely low income. Uh and people with in- intellectual and developmental disabilities and. Uh that picture on the screen that you could see there, that is our latest project that was finished in Centralia. Those are the guardians tenants just getting ready to move into their new home, so smiles on their faces as they uh get to have their forever home. Um on this next slide, though, you will see. That despite all of these units that Options has made, there is still a big gap to close. Right now, the needs assessment that came out in November says there's forty eight thousand adults with ADD with. Uh the adult population with ADD and thirty seven thousand of those are estimated. To face housing insecurity. That is almost eighty percent of the total adult population and with. Rising rates and low inventory and the number of children that will be moving on into adulthood. That number is only expected to rise year after year. So on this next slide, we'll talk about how we can close that gap just a little bit, and that is to get. A housing award from yours truly, the city of Lacey. We are looking to. Take one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the award and leverage it to the Housing Trust Fund. In the September round, which we would ask for an additional seven hundred and forty five thousand to help develop this project. The project would be to acquire and develop a three bedroom, single family home in the city of Lacey. These individuals would be at thirty percent or below area median income. And they would receive twenty four seven in-home support services from KAKUA, a longstanding nonprofit organization. Uh that serves people with developmental disabilities. Um we would rehab the property with accessibility modifications. Uh Options' goal is always to have the individuals that move in there to have the opportunity to age in place, so. Whether they need those accessibility modifications straight away. In the near future, in the long term future, we try as much as possible within budget. To be able to provide those opportunities and ninety percent of their Washington portfolio does have accessibility modifications. Uh part of that development project includes environmental works. They are the senior architect and they are a nonprofit based in Seattle. They have done a majority of the accessibility affordability projects with the with the the Housing Trust Fund. And we've worked with them on probably the last twenty five houses for Options. Uh on the next slide, you'll see this is what's gonna happen once. This project does get placed into service. The individuals will have the affordability and the accessibility to age in place. This is really important. These individuals are making around nine hundred dollars a month. You could imagine in market rate housing, or if they can't even afford to be in market rate housing. They are living at home with their parents. Some of them could be potentially in very dire housing situations. And we are trying to give them the opportunity to age in place in this beautiful home that we would provide for them. And this would be similar to homes first. We'd be charging thirty percent of their income, so they would have. Uh much more disposable income to be able to spend on. The rest of their quality of life and to be able to greater connect with their communities. Um Options with would make a forty year commitment. This would be written in the covenant indeed. With the Housing Trust Fund to maintain that affordability for forty years. And that would be specifically for extremely low income individuals with ADD, so we're talking. ADD and at that thirty percent or below area median income. Uh we talked a little bit already about the tenants only paying thirty percent of their monthly income and also getting twenty four seven in-home support with KAKUA Services. These tenants are already contracted to receive those services through the DSHS Developmental Disabilities Administration. And we would be partnering with them as the referral entity uh at lease up and uh as vacancies would occur. Um we are looking forward to going into the funding round with. The the Housing Trust Fund with having the city of Lacey award to help leverage. And then have a home ready by the summer of twenty twenty four, so looking forward to an opportunity to give. Three folks a new home in Lacey next year. Thank you.
Are there any questions uh from the council?
Yeah.
Council member.
I'm just curious, so the money from the Housing Trust Fund, that is that a um. Is that a competitive pro bidding process to get that or how does that work exactly?
Yeah, so the biennium begins this year and they're finalizing those numbers. The last two bienniums, there's been five million dollars per biennium. Set aside specifically for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And they have always required um um proposals to be able to leverage funding. And they want to partner with other local funders and so. Over the years, we've done that with Thurston County, we've done that with Pierce County, King County, all the way up and down the Puget Sound corridor. And it certainly makes you much more competitive. I mean, our projects are usually fairly competitive because we're going to the greatest need when you're talking about. The the lowest income and these folks having pretty severe developmental disabilities. Uh but they definitely want to feel like the local community is in there to partner with them.
So what happens if we hurt, you know, we are if we do grant the money, right, from the C R C D B G funds? But you're not successful in that process.
Well, I guess that would be up to you guys if you wanted to give us the opportunity to go into the biennium the second year. Um I would say that the probability is very, very strong. We already have a letter of support from DDA. And this is a set aside specifically for people with developmental disabilities. We already have an MOU with KAKUA who has a great reputation in Lacey and Thurston County. And then Options for Supported Housing has fifty two houses that were funded by the Housing Trust Fund in time within budget, so. They know that we're up to the task.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others?
Yes.
Council member Cox.
Um hi Jacob, uh something you said just tickled my brain here a little bit. You said there's a forty year commitment to maintain the um affordability there. What happens after forty years? Is that renewable or does it become market rate to help support the organization or what?
That would be a great question. I you know, we always joke, it's like the people who are deciding this forty years, most of us may not be here when that happens. Uh but the good news is is that as long as Options for Supported Housing owns that property, they have nothing to do but. Continue their mission, so I'm hoping that we pass the baton on to the next group of people who can maintain that mission. The good thing about a lot of the public funders, they've done a great job of saying, we'll help you in year twenty three if you extend this covenant, so they might say. Okay, we'll help you with that roof that's had an issue, or if you've had some sort of accident or you need some accessibility modifications that you didn't foresee. They'll say, we'll make a deal with you and maybe add ten more years to the government or twenty years to the covenant. Uh but technically, yes, if everything went perfectly smooth, people were living there, nothing had changed a- after forty years. Options for Supported Housing would have an opportunity to seek elsewhere, but I would say less than one percent that would happen. And that's not based on any research study that I've done.
Thank you.
Sure.
Forty year uh period is a standardized period that Housing Trust Fund dollars or Department of Commerce administrate funds. Put on it's a state requirement and like like Jacob said is, once they you know, re- re-access those funds, that forty year commitment gets sent out further, so.
Oh.
Let's state those are forty years at a time. Yeah. Are there any other questions for this presenter? Okay, well, uh seeing none, it has turned to seven o'clock, which is uh just in time for our next agenda item.
Do you have Shannon, what what next steps or?
Certainly by the minutes. First of all, I just want to thank all of the presenters for being here tonight and being able to provide an overview of their projects. Um next steps, um we do plan to return to council in May on either May eleventh or May eighteenth. Just to continue this conversation so that we can move forward with recommendations, hopefully by early uh June, if not mid-May.
Is that our is that there's a deadline, right? And that is that June is the deadline for us to have it done?
The county would like to have a decision by June so they can start their process because they have several steps they need to take in order to get funding.
Is that the June third date I keep hearing about?
Um.
June tenth.
I'm not sure what's the June third or the June tenth date is, but I'm hoping that we will have action by May eighteen. Which would give the county plenty of time uh to start their their end of the process. We can make that happen.
Okay, well, thank you for having, for putting this together for us. You know, when we first saw this and. We kind of looked at these names and numbers and um you know, what what they do on paper, it didn't. It doesn't really tell you all that much. You know, but but having these guys here and and break it down for you and and thank you for bringing all your presentations with you. Uh and and kind of giving us a a verbal and available uh visible illustration of how you. Connect these dots and make these things happen. Um I think that is really gonna help the decision process that will happen on May eighteenth. Or May eleventh as well. Let's see how that works out. And with that, having only soaked up two minutes.
Um I've got three more minutes of material if you're if you're looking for.
You wanna use your three minutes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Uh so for our next agenda item, apparently I'm handing it off to Brick.
Yes.
For our future uh police station update.
So we got kind of two items really kind of rolling in the in the one. It's uh as uh. Council member recall, back in December, uh you received a presentation on the future police station planning at first the thirty percent plans and with that came. Um um construction estimates at that thirty percent stage as well as a financial strategy. And at that time, we said that we would come back about this time of year to uh present. An update and have the sixty percent uh plans completed and revise constru- uh construction estimates. As well as potential revised funding strategies. And so tonight, we're here to provide that uh update and I wanna. You know, invite uh Bill Valdez up to the table. Bill, been the project manager for K and B Architects. And we also have the whole project management team here tonight with John Swen- uh Swodecki and Ashley Smith. As well as Deputy Chief Hollis and Chief Armada. You all can be able to buy the questions and or respond to questions as we get through the conversation. But tonight, I'm having the flow of events. I wanna just kind of provide, have the team provide a uh overview of the sixty percent plans. Where we kind of been in the design project, where it is today. And what some of those changes are and the revised construction estimates. And then we'll roll into uh Troy come up and start talking about what we've been looking at as a uh financial strategy to to. Lead the revised construction estimate. Um ultimately, at the end of the at the meeting, we're just looking for uh council, you know, make sure you have all the information you have. Ask the questions you would like to ask and then just make sure that everybody's okay moving forward with this process because. It is something too that we do have some key dates coming up that we would need to make meet. In order to make sure that we can keep within current uh uh cost ranges. So with that. I'll turn over the bill and we can have an overview of the plans and then we can roll into the conversations.
Good evening. Um thank you very much. I I am Bill Valdez. I'm a partner at K and B Architects. And acting as the principal in charge on the project, kind of leading the design team. Also, Brian Blay. Uh who's an architect within uh our firm as well as is here on the call, so if we have any questions as we kind of advance through. Uh either one of us would be able to kind of respond to you to that, so. Moving on, um we can kind of go and kind of cover from this. Uh also, who's been kind of working with us is the architects at Ross Shepard. They are a law and justice uh planning and design firm. Um and they've been uh they're part of our our overall team as well. Uh so this slide is again just to kind of illustrate exactly where what the site is that we're developing here is check was which is directly north. Uh of the current uh city hall and police station site, as you kind of see with the green there. Uh the existing site is bubbled there in the lighter color. Um so again, it's currently a an undeveloped area. Um and trying to preserve that uh that feeling as part of the uh site development and placement of the the project there. Um so really, not much has really changed since the last presentation, but. Um uh as you can see, the new police building, which is a an arch structure, which uh reflects back towards. Uh city hall is located there in the center. Uh the main entrance for the public is. Uh uh right along College Street. We have a looped access road as well as all the public parking located there. All the staff parking is located on the north and the northeast side of the site. Uh so it really using the building and the site to separate the security areas from the public areas. Uh and the staff actually have uh access both off of the looped uh public road there at the northwest right there. As well as having that secondary access with the connection down the Sixth Avenue to the south. Um so next slide. Uh we just wanted to kind of refresh your memory with regard to where the plans were at the end of thirty percent design. This happens to the the main entry level. So as we discussed, uh the building is two story, but it's at grade at both levels. Because of the site is sloping. Uh so this the public entrance here on the left is at grade. Directly off of that looped public parking uh road. Uh everything public with the uh communities. Uh community room and lobby and uh front desk area is there in yellow. All the other staff areas is everything else beyond that, which is behind a a secured line. So within on on this level, we essentially have the records area, we have the command um area as well as the administration. Investigations and then some additional staff uh break rooms and and other other support uh areas on this level. The entire building is organized around a main central corridor, which connects the building both vertically with elevators and stairs. As well as horizontally and all the different departments with the main corridor. Going to the next slide, on the the fr- the lower level is really where uh the staff staff operations as well as evidence. And then staff support with locker rooms and the fitness areas are all located at this level, as well as all in custody. Uh with the, as you're indicating there, with the holding and then vehicle Sallyport at this level. Uh again, as you can see, this is also at grade exiting out to the north and to the east, so we have secured staff entries for staff, which. Strictly accessed that those parking lots that we showed on the secured staff area. So thi- this is where everything stood at the end of thirty percent design. Going to the next slide, this is where we currently stand on the main entry floor um at sixty percent design. So what we've tried to illustrate here, as you can see, this blue line kind of uh flows in and around and through the building. That is an overlay of where the thirty percent design uh is compared to now. Um and i- it illustrates that we were able to densify the building, take out some square footage from the building. Which was a target for redu- reduction of cost as well as for efficiency of operations. Um but essentially, the buildings and the departments are laid out in the same locations. We've just been able to refine the design. And refine the layouts for functionality based off of the input coming um from the police department. Uh but still, the organization of the building is essentially the same with all the the departments still operating on this upper level. And everything organized around that main central corridor, uh linking all the departments both horizontally as well as vertically through the building. Public entry is still in the same location to left off of that loop um uh public access road. Going down to the the lower lo- oh, um yeah, I will talk about that on the lower level as well, so on the next. Next level, same thing, the blue outline kind of illustrates what the building looked like at thirty percent design. Versus where it's at right now with sixty percent. So you can see that reduction that we made to the building and um. And then in densifying and compact compacting it. Uh for the reductions, the departments are essentially laid out in still the same locations on this level. Still the functions are still the same on this level. Um the gray toned area there on the far right hand side, that is really what's planned for future growth and expansion. So that entire end of the building can be expanded both uh at this main this lower level as well as the the main level. Uh to provide that additional future growth if that need happens to arise. Um so that was planned on the site that we've been uh planning utilities and other. Uh site uh elements around keeping it clear of that that zone. Uh so nothing needs to be relocated if in the future uh the city wants to expand the building. So.
Um.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
How much square footage did you have to remove?
Um the target was um. I got the the numbers here so I can. So uh at the end of SMAC design, we're at uh just over forty nine thousand square feet. And um the target based off of the 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 feedback from council was to get down around. Forty three thousand six hundred square feet, which allowed us to get down to the thirty eight million dollar number. Um the current design right now, we're at um forty six thousand square feet. So we're able to take out about three thousand square feet. Out of the building. So we're not able to get down to quite to the target. We could talk a little bit more about uh what affected that.
Absolutely.
Point out. What the areas of the map were that shrink the most like this? You can't see the two things next to each other. What are the the colors that shrink the most and what are those functions?
Uh we were able to take out by just uh condensing the building a bit, a lot of general circulation. Um so uh non-programmed spaces, we're able to reduce that quite a bit. Um and then we're able to kind of look at some other just general spaces that were a little bit oversized. So the lobby uh during. Thirty percent was a little bit oversized from program, reduce that. There is a lot of individual spaces that were slightly, you know, whether it's five percent or ten percent over program. We're tighten those up to to be right on program. Uh but it wasn't just taking out of one individual location. It was pretty much throughout the entire program and really looking at those reductions.
Hope I can. So as far as programming, just like. You cut out a conference room, a investigation room, we shrunk down because we were rather large, we thought. We're conducting confidential investigations. We've shrunk that down. We took out an entire conference room in that area. Um and we worked on the program, the building to see where we can. Where we can overlap functions such as doing defensive tactics training inside the gym instead of having a separate room for that. Um so we have some functions that kind of overlap. Um it's not ideal, but it'll work.
We also moved some of the some storage areas and some other functions that were in the main building out to the future uh training building. Um and just differed, you know, those needs and those spaces uh for if and when the training building ever gets built. Yes.
I'm just curious. I just I don't have a question maybe more for chief than for you. Is it? Is it short sighted to take that reduction in size? If it's, I mean, is it only going to mean that we have to expand this building sooner, which had a had a greater cost in the future than it would be today? Does it actually make sense to reduce the size?
Based upon the current programming for the for the for the building and our estimated uh expansion and population, just based on normal growth curves and was pro- was currently programming. This should be a twenty five to a twenty twenty five year building.
Without the expansion.
Out any expansion. Now. Hide the ball. I would like the training center to be built. That's another ten million dollars not included in this presentation today. We had to pull out a ballistic range, virtual simulator and a large classroom out of this project in order to make it. Under under the limits we were talking about. Right. So we're still have to go offsite for ballistic range or stuff to go aside for for a simulator. Um to do, we'd like to do regional training. We'd like to do. Uh training with our our partners in the region as well. We don't have that ability at this site until we build the regional training center.
And and then that is a future phase that we can start planning for, look for other partnerships, other ways to do that. And um of course, as you said, it's it's not ideal, but we're continuing the current practice of of going offsite for some of those training needs that they need.
For the regional training center, how many are look, do we have any in Thurston County?
No.
Okay.
I think this is we do. We do some joint training like at the. At the community training, uh the community center, sometimes we do some group training there.
Okay.
That's a large enough facility. We could do that. Uh it's not a secure environment, which is one problem. So there's certain types of training we can do there. Um you can't do any ballistic training there. You really can't do any other type of training that that would draw attention.
What if we had it, would we co-op with Olympia and Tomater?
It would be our it would be our goal to to partner with all our regional partners.
And could that be a revenue source to offset the cost?
There it is.
I I would say definitely cost sharing.
Okay.
I'm not sure how much revenue would generate in in all reality, but generally these things tend to be is definitely cost sharing. And intend intend towards being at least revenue neutral. So don't I won't ever say it's going to make a profit.
Well, but it could help offset the.
But at the same time, it would definitely offset the operating costs.
But also there's there's two models are looking for partnerships to participate in capital construction. Or try to look at, can we get revenue off the ability to pay back capital pressure? And that's a much more difficult issue when you deal with public agencies and those type of things. So um. Looking at this as it's not just the Thurston County Sheriff, uh Lim- Olympia and Tomater, but also you have the State Patrol. You have other folks that could be utilized in this that we can look for partnerships to be able to um. Potentially fund that construction, but those are opportunities that we would look for in the future.
Okay.
That is a great question just about the, you know, is is the decision that we were made short sighted. And again, at the at the being of sixty percent, um you were we're trying to look at those reductions to be able to hit the budgetary numbers of, you know, reducing six. You know, roughly about six thousand square feet. There's a lot of conversations that was like, where are we going to get the really best value out of that? The conversation was a lot focused on evidence and some other spaces in around that the evidence area. And ultimately, it was not beneficial to take all of those reductions. So that's why we were not able to hit a lot of those reductions because that was going to be a short sighted endeavor. And there would was going to have to be expansions to accommodate evidence growth, which is usually the the quickest and largest growing. Uh aspect within any law enforcement facility. So to be able to accommodate that longer term. Lifespan of the building before a expansion needs to occur, that was really a big focus to saying. We we need at least this much square footage within evidence to be able to accommodate that.
And so the conversation there is back when we last time we touched the evidence room was back in the early two thousands or so. Um it was expanded based upon the population, the size of the department number of incidents we did. Now with the larger city for in Thurston County, and that's probably not going to change. And being the largest city, we're going to attract a. A a bigger volume of crime assets, there's going to be additional evidence and cases not getting any shorter in time. The retention on evidence is only getting longer. Um so there has to be additional capacity to be prepared for that.
Question about. This is, and I don't know if it's in the public area, but one of the concerns with the current space is that it it wasn't. Very friendly for members of the public who need to come in and give statements, for instance, they had to walk through the middle of the station.
Right past people there giving.
Why is it booked now that you're condensing the space? Is there still an adequate attractive or inviting space for members of the public to have to come in?
Yes, that's it's really meant to be very uh humanistic and 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 friendly. When you walk in the door, the counter is right in front of you. You don't have to jog left or right. It's right there. It's an inviting entrance. It's well lit. Uh landscaping, which we talk a lot about. To my chagrin.
Yes.
Um but it'll be very, it'll be very customer friendly, very intuitive to get to the building to where you want to go. There'll be, there's a soft interview off the lobby where you can get private private interview. Um if we have confidential witnesses, victims, things like that, we can bring them to the back and they won't be um seen or perceived or react, have access by from anybody. Um so it gives them a level of confidential privacy as well.
There are a separation of spaces as well. So if for some reason we're dealing with a suspect, they're now coming in through the the. Operations floors or the ground level, they're not, there is not even a chance for the two to even meet. If for some reason we have a suspect, we have a victim, they happen to pass in the halls, there's just not a chance of that happening the way that the building is currently set up.
And also the the nice public space in the in the front entrance is also a community room, multi-purpose room. It also there was a um emergency operations center if we need to activate something, but it also could be a space available to public public events. But then also double as the more potential training spaces to just be a multi-purpose room in that front.
Exactly. No doubt you have more. Please continue.
You bet. Thank you. Next slide. Um so as far as um the designs continue to advance, um really the forms, the the. At the architectural statements of the building really hasn't changed from what we presented earlier. On the left hand side is a bird's eye view is essentially of the campus. So the training building is to the north along uh I five. The main building is placed in the center of the site. Uh you can see the the staff kind of access road and parking kind of splitting and separating the two buildings there. Uh we're calling out that future expansion, which is a little bit off the slide, but essentially that the 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 curve and the arc of the building would just kind of continue and elongate the building as we expand there. And you can start to see that public entrance. Uh and we have a, you know, courtyard, uh not courtyard, but plaza as well as uh the ADA parking right up there in front. So it's very inviting. Um again, the building's been located to try to take advantage of the beautiful site that's there. Um try to dis- disturb the existing landscaping as well as kind of trees and foliage as little as possible. And try to kind of preserve that feeling that you already have on the existing campus. Um there in the top right hand corner is really the inspirational image that we started at the very beginning of SCMAC design about with regard to materials. And and really some of the styling of the building. So again, using um. Um some metal paneling, the the use of glass and transparency in locations, using. Uh wood accents and fins for screening for privacy in other locations. Uh so this was just an inspirational kind of image that we used as uh the basis of some of the design statements. And then there at the bottom right hand side is really a a lower view uh looking at. The uh community room right there, which is, you know, glazed and a little bit more transparent. Um uh through the 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 public uh handicap uh parking, ADA parking there at the beginning and from the building. And that's the the main entrance.
Okay, so real quick. So just to the right side of the main entrance, I was, is the is that section of the building, is that below grade? Or at least half of it? Or how does that? Um. Because that's what I have in my mind for some reason that.
So um. So essentially, yes, what we have here, this element along here and here. This is a retaining wall. So this whole area does drop off a bit there. And so by the time you get back in here, this this whole area that that lower level of the building is daylight. Uh and it has like uh has windows out into and towards the south and then towards the forested area. Um so the the area that is actually there, that's actually underground, that's the the locker rooms. Uh and those areas that really don't need daylight going necessarily into them. So that area is actually below the ground. At that that location there. But the gym is on the opposite side, which is actually at ground level. So that there they're actually walking out and able to kind of use. Another terraced area there for additional outdoor fitness and 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 other functions out there.
But the holding cell was below grade.
Uh it's at that lower level, um but it's at grade. So essentially it's like um. We have. A slope. So we have a, say, we have our site that's like this. And we're locating a two story building across it. So this area is. At grade here and this upper level is at grade here. So we actually have that amount of slope and transition across our site. You don't really look at it when you're there, but once you start walking it. You do kind of have this bowl in the middle of the site.
Yeah, it was evident on the thirty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that saves a lot, that type of design, I'd assume saves a lot of cost and cut and fill and most type of thing when you're working with the.
Right. And it actually helped with some circulation and and everything else. So we've we've been trying to take advantage of the site, not work against the site as much as we can from the start of the design.
Alright, sorry about that.
No problem.
Uh next quick, next slide. Um so as we kind of uh discussed a little bit previously, the community room is definitely a community asset. Um so the the images along the top, those are just uh other civic uh spaces. As again, example images of what this space can look like with the CLT exposed roof with a wood structure. Um you know, uh uh sloping um. Uh roof. So we have some high volumes, the uh being able to add daylight into the space, it's going to be a very nice um desired space. For uh public to be able to utilize as well as the emergency operations center, which is kind of illustrating with those images of examples of other uh E O Cs. The amount of technology and um uh that will be incorporated into the space to be highly utilized. So it's a flexible space for trainings, conference rooms, E O C uh and other functions. So.
Counsel?
Hey.
That looks like a nice counselor.
So. Next slide. Um so uh as far as where we're at, as far as construction costs uh and budget goes. Uh at the end of SCMAC design, um or thirty percent design, when we came back and presented to to council, the goal was to. We had to reduce down to forty three thousand seven hundred square feet uh for a goal of thirty eight million dollar construction value. Uh where we stand right now with our cost estimate, we're at uh forty six thousand square feet, just a little bit over at forty two uh million two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh dollars. So uh we've had an increase of about uh four million dollars over. Uh the the end of thirty percent design goal. Um the future phase is really those uh that mainly the training building, which is broken into multiple different alternates to. Uh over time, be able to build it out, um as well as a couple of other alternates that we've looked at. Uh a car wash area, uh canopy, as well as uh we currently have. Uh E V chargers um in the building or in in the design, but being able to take them from a a type two to a fast charging. Um um vehicle charging uh station uh has a cost associated with this. We're carrying that as a uh as an all add alternate. Um so those are all carried down below the line. Okay, uh slide. Uh this is same slide that we presented at the end of thirty is thirty percent. Um you know, we've just had a huge amount of escalation just over uh the last three years. Uh through the beginning of COVID and through now. So it's been something that we've been wrestling with and kind of dealing with. We really don't see uh escalation necessarily uh slowing down or necessarily backing off. Uh so we do have uh escalation values built into all these numbers. We've been able to monitor them and stay on track. Uh but all also gets down to kind of the urgency to make sure the sooner that we're able to kind of get the project. Uh started and get a bid, we're able to then mitigate and manage so that those escalation costs, uh obviously. So it's something that we're very conscious about.
And so the the Federal Reserve seems to think that their plan is working. Are you saying that?
Well, uh well, we we were not, we're not having the ten percent per quarter escalation, but we still are having, you know, one and a half to two percent. Per quarter. Uh so we currently are tracking uh uh right around five to six percent per year.
Okay.
In escalation costs. So it is helping and there's definitely certain segments of the construction industry and uh that are seeing a bit of a slowdown. Um but um but we're not going in a recession at this point right now.
We're still relying on Canadian products?
Um.
That's not a trick question.
It's not a trick question.
Yeah, uh I so everything that we are um. We're trying to locally and regionally source all of our materials the best that we can.
Yep.
Um so you know, that's really kind of the goal. We're not putting anything in here that is only coming out of Europe or only coming out of, you know, other other locations. We're we're trying to base everything that's either um regionally or heavily supported uh within the 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 area.
The Brazilian, but the Benga wood.
No, we're not doing any of that.
Okay. I'm just kidding.
And again, that that was a big part of, you know, C L T and the utilize it. It for a structural element because we actually have so much um localized, whether it's in Portland or Eastern Washington. They actually have the factories that, you know, fabricate and manufacture and provide that type of product. So it's it's thinking that way. Um to be able to control shipping costs and be able to control costs and manage costs that way. So.
Okay, cool. And and again, like you said, no no trick questions here. All I think all of us want to see this happen.
Yeah, definitely. So next slide. Um so this is just kind of a recap of where. Um, so this is just kind of a recap of where we're at at the end of thirty percent design. Um, so again, the the construction cost was at thirty eight million. Uh, we had uh soft costs, which is simply essentially everything outside of bricks and mortar, outside the building and the site development costs, which brought a total project cost up to a range of uh forty nine to fifty two million. Down below type illustrates everything that's kind of within each one of those pockets of money uh within, you know, what's covered in our construction, what's covered underneath the soft costs. So, next slide. And so where we stand now at the this point in sixty percent uh designs, we're at forty two million. Uh, there's still about fourteen million dollars in soft costs, uh which brings the the total uh project cost of fifty three to fifty six million as a range. Um, you know, uh, design contingency and escalation contingencies have changed from thirty percent to sixty percent since we're closer to uh hopefully the start of construction that the es- escalation amount has decreased and we've defined a lot more with designs. So our design contingency has decreased since we know more about the the products, we know more about the the design. So that's all been factored in.
On that uh cost per square foot, is that constr- uh building and site?
That's building and site.
So the building cost per square foot was the previous slide was eight sixty nine, or that building and site?
That's all those are both looking at a building and site.
Okay. Because I, I've been the, I saw some numbers, there's a two dollars difference between the thirty and sixty percent. That's why I was asking that question.
Um. Yeah, I can't.
They're the same, same number at the end of the day. That's why I was wondering if I should try to correlate those two numbers.
Yeah, they they are for the building and the site, and that's where it kind of puts it a little bit out of uh kind of kilter of understanding that. So take it back to the sixty percent. So nine hundred and eleven dollars square foot, that's seems like a lot for the building. Uh, in the reality of it, when you end up breaking it out, there's twenty eight million dollars for the building and fourteen million dollars for the site development and all site work uh on the site. So in rea- that's all in that nine hundred and eleven dollars a square foot. So really because of the size of the site and so much work being done onto the site with, you know, parking and utilities and clearing of the site and grading and everything else, uh there's a lot of work kind of buried and and put into the site.
Um, Rick, I believe the cost per square foot number shown here is prior to the revised estimate received from the cost estimator. Um, the last revision that was around eight hundred and sixty four dollars a square foot, this is what we discussed.
And I knew there was going to be some more that, so that information from the cost estimator is coming out, that was coming in next week.
Uh, the in- initial revision that we had looked at last week was closer to that number. So it may just not be updated on the slide, we'll verify that and go back.
You know, I was glad that you said, um, design contingency, because I understand construction contingency, which we usually run ten fifteen percent in my industry. Um, but design contingency, I I'm, I don't know what kind of percentages we're talking about.
So usually at the beginning of Schmack Design, it's about fifteen percent and then it's about ten percent um at the beginning of design development and then it's about five percent at the being of um a- and through um construction document phase. So, you know, that ninety percent design phase. So it's it's constantly being re- reduced and essentially the idea behind it. Yeah, right. And that is essentially the things that you can actually count. Um, it's like it's going out of the contingency and actually into a hardline number of saying, okay, this is what this widget is and how much how many widgets we actually have. So then there's less unknown. So that design contingency is for the things that are not quite totally quantified within the estimate that we can't quite count.
Yeah, I I understand what contingencies are, but I did had no idea what your percentage was.
Yeah, so it it definitely changes as the design gets further and further along.
That helps.
Yeah. So right now, since we're at the end of design development, sixty percent and starting the final design construction documents, uh, we're down at five percent design contingency.
Nice.
How how long before we find a position where we could get out to bed and get this thing going?
Well, I think that's what we're.
Yeah.
We'll talk about schedule and and um and there are a couple of little pieces too that we need to hit as well in terms of building permits and stuff.
You bet.
Shovels on the ground tomorrow.
Um, so so these are some of the the big milestones that we're looking at. So we had um um a uh our site plan review um on April the twentieth was uh submitted and then uh our ninety percent uh phase would begin hopefully um uh on the twenty fourth. We have a, we're targeting a building permit application submittal on June the fifteenth, and this is a critical date because on July one, the code codes change. Um, which will have a drastic effect on the overall design as well as what the market is indicating would have a drastic effect on cost of projects. Um, so this is very, very critical for us and our team that we're targeting to be able to get um and giving us plenty of leeway. So we're targeting in April fifteenth, submittal date.
June fifteenth.
Or sorry, June, June.
And as long as we're submit, it's submitted before July one, we don't have to deal with the changes, correct?
You have to, you have to get the complete application together. So that's part of it. And so currently, uh, the land use permit has been submitted and rounded for reviews. That's the first step. And then um and then once we get, uh, go forward with tonight's conversation, then then put together the full submittal for the building permit to get it in the vest.
And so based off of this, we would assume that our hundred percent uh uh documents would be done on September the fourteenth, which means that we would essentially have a permit in hand, be able to pick up any permit comments and have them incorporated into a final one hundred percent um bid set. Uh, then based off of that, uh, then we'd start our bidding process and essentially that would go into Q one, early Q one of twenty twenty four uh with a a bid award following that.
Construction to happen in twenty middle of part of twenty four.
And into twenty twenty five. Uh, we're currently tracking a twenty month construction duration.
Do you want to ask this question? Because I don't know. And I I really want to know. Okay, so is it, is it just one contractor who oversees this entire project or is it is and they sub out and and they gather and okay, and so it's not like we have to bid it out to each individual concrete guy because that's going to be a lot of money.
Yeah, this would be bidding out to one general contractor who then would bring in their full um group of uh trade partners and subcontractors to be be able to support all um uh aspects of the project.
Okay.
Does he have any more questions on design?
Do you have any?
Transitioning to the the funding side.
That's all your slides?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Now we need Troy to tell us how we pay for it.
Well, and another part of the thing too, and we got different numbers up there. And that's one of the challenges too is because we have, you know, total project costs, which is funding that we've already um have committed and and sung on the project. And we have the the MAC costs or the materials and construction costs, and then you have the old the overall um self cost. So you'll see some numbers now with Troy's presentation, I look at total costs, but what we're looking at for our funding strategy to be able to utilize a few more reserves and uh and get us to the moving forward.
This flow off pretty smooth, a few more resources. It's got a nice flow to it. Let's see how that looks on paper.
But also too, as you you'll see in his presentation, we're also going to talk about some of the other commitments that council in the city has and and over the next couple of years too, and how we're going to be trying to balance those as well. So.
Great evening, Council. Good thing I'm used to getting stuck so low.
So it's bigger than most of the ones you get.
A little bit bigger, that's for sure. Um, in terms of outline, as Rick said, you know, we'll we'll kind of talk about where we've where we've been and where we're going to go. Well, the strategy to pay for this project. Um, we'll talk a little bit about preliminary two thousand twenty two uh cash reserves that available. And as Rick said, we'll contact big picture and some of the other opportunities and priorities that we think the council has identified. So let's look and see where we've been. So um, you know, as we softened earlier presentation, we started off at about a forty million dollar project. The number you're seeing here includes uh some of that preliminary design as well as land acquisition. So I like to look at it as a total project cost of somewhere near forty five million. So this, these numbers were presented to council and uh a couple of different times. At the last time you saw these numbers were during the former city manager's budget presentation for this year's budget. Uh, we had fifteen million dollars in uh L T G O debt, this limited tax general obligation debt. These are non-voted uh bonds. Ten million dollars coming from real estate excise tax reserves. Historically, we've used one hundred percent of these uh taxes for street improvements. We identified almost seven million dollars. That's the entirety of our ARPA dollars that came uh from um a little bit relieved. That time we identified eight million dollars in general fund revenue uh reserves, and this came from the what used to be the gateway uh civic uh investment reserve. And then, like I said, I I like to look at this as a whole picture and we had committed five million dollars in general fund reserves back in two thousand and one for again land acquisition and preliminary design.
And and correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, but to pay back the L T G O bonds, we were going to do that with the re- with rate money, correct?
That's correct. And um, the reason we targeted that fifteen million dollars back late twenty two was um, I think the kind of long term projection for real estate excise tax, some room two and a half million uh per year, uh the uh estimated debt payment on this fifteen million is about half of that. So about one point two five million per year. So about three weeks later, we had the thirty percent design discussion with the council. The numbers, of course, changed pretty drastically. Um, so we had to make some adjustments in terms of fully funding this project. That increased the uh L T G O debt to eighteen million. Uh, what's worth noting here, that's about one point five million per year in debt payment. So we went from about fifty percent to just over sixty percent of our projected uh real estate excise tax collections. Uh, we increased uh the use of real estate excise tax reserves to eighteen million. So we went from uh under a third of the reserve to um half the reserve. Again, that was uh historically used for street projects. Uh, the ARPA dollars were a fixed amount, so we stayed at six point eight million. Uh, we upped the general fund reserves up just a little bit. So we have eight point seven million dollars in general reserves and the land number stays the same. So fast forward to today. So we have the uh, of course, the very latest uh numbers from the sixty percent design. We're looking at a total project cost of about sixty one point five million dollars. And we are uh suggesting that we take an additional five million dollars of general fund reserves to uh fund that difference. I think I'll stay in the same. So you're probably wondering where that five million dollars is going to come from.
We thought you were going to write a check.
Indeed will be. So this is a, this is a preliminary number. Um, we are still working very hard to finish our two thousand twenty two financial statements. In fact, this number just changed for me today. So um every time I look at it, it changes a little bit.
It went up or down?
It went down, but we're still okay. Um, so the uh projected, uh, I'm just going to call it year-end savings. There's a there's thousands of moving parts that go into this number, but uh we'll for this purpose call this year-end savings of ten million dollars. So we're going to do a little quick math. We're going to start subtracting from this number to uh hopefully make you feel comfortable on what we're proposing. So right off the bat, we had to take uh half of the ARPA dollars from this uh reserve because uh we of course identified this for the police station, but that number did go into that number and we had already committed that. So that takes away from the ten billion. Um, late in the two thousand twenty three budget process, we added three point five million dollars in support for the regional housing project as well as the Franz Anderson tiny home project. So three point five million dollars comes from this uh balance. Here's the five million dollars of police station. And those of you who could do math really quick in your head, you could already see we exceeded ten million, but I'll I'll get to that. Um, we are suggesting that we uh continue to fund our strategic investment. This is an economic development piece. We're suggesting we put another half million dollars into this fund. We've historically kept that at two point five million dollars. Um, we do have budgeted this year to spend about a half million dollars. So we'd like, you know, for the council to have those opportunities, take advantage of those priorities that might might present themselves. Um, we're suggesting that we uh reserve fifty thousand dollars for the McKinney house. Uh, this is kind of a recent development, so there's been a little bit of interest here in a potential economic development project. So we'd like to put aside fifty thousand dollars for feasibility and a concept study. Uh, great Kyo Park, you might remember this from the budget amendment update that was just made to the council. Uh, we of course had a committee reserve five million dollars for the phase one A of this project. Uh, the ninety percent design shows uh five million two hundred and twenty nine thousand. So we need a little bit more to make sure we have that project fully funded. And then we have um a couple more changes. And again, these were presented during the budget amendment presentation. Uh, the sixty percent design for the rack parking lot project is coming up about five hundred thousand more than the thirty percent design. And then we have uh some lighting uh warranty issues. We'd like to spend sixty thousand dollars to make sure we maintain uh the lights uh within the rack. So if you add up all of these takeaways on the ten million, you get about thirteen point uh two million dollars. Um, we're going to make this up with what I'm calling undesigned reserves, and I'm not going to be able to explain this properly. Again, a lot of moving parts, but um we had from the transition from two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty three, we had about thirty changes to our reserve accounts. And basically what's happened is as we've went through two thousand twenty two and we used we completed projects, bought equipment that we had designated for these types of reserves, we were able to do that through existing revenues. We didn't have to use these reserves. So we can repurpose those reserves uh back into this purpose. So really, at the end of the day, we have about thirteen point three million dollars in available um undesigned reserves that uh we could take care of these projects. So this is our proposal in terms of what we're looking at and preliminary uh preliminary ending cash for the for the general fund. Again, we have the capacity for the five million dollar shortfall uh change that we saw with the sixty percent design.
And this is what you're hoping to bring to the full council uh this month later this.
Well, we we could take some of these of or some of these actions already been taken by council. Um, the rest we could handle administratively. So within the emitted reserve ordinance that the council passed back in December, you authorize a city manager and finance director to assign reserves. This is still a very strong message in terms of what the intent is for the council. Uh, we are, like I said, we're coming up on our deadlines to to finish our financial statements. Uh, that would help us uh make those designations administratively, get them into the financial statements, making the or and communicating the the council's wishes and and priorities for these funds.
Additional budget amendment because the additional funds are on the.
Correct, right. So we can assign them based on council direction and comfortability.
Previous sustained priorities.
It's nice to be in a good place.
It is. Does anybody else have any comment or question about what you've seen?
Any? The ARPA S L F R F, why is that a debt and not a?
Remind me what the ARPA cost is.
These are, these are actually, um, so the upper total ARPA dollars is six point nine million. It comes in two different installments. So this is the twenty twenty two installment that's already committed to the police station. So let's take it out of our preliminary saving. It's going to send our positive balance. It's taking out the savings. It's already committed to the police station.
Right?
Yeah, that's half of, the other half was committed previous year.
Want to talk a little bit about other commitments and priorities. Uh, Deputy Mayor and I had a nice little conversation before the meeting about opportunity cost and that's very much what this is about. Our other commitments that that we've made as a city, there's other priorities that the council has identified and I, you know, really don't want to have the council lose track of that in terms of the the big picture. So what you're going to see is a, you know, a list of priorities and commitments that some of them are funded, some of them are not. Uh, but we want to make sure that we know from a staff perspective what we should be striving towards and have an affirmation of that. So the first is the seventh and Colladron about. Um, this is a, you know, an economic development piece. It's a transportation piece. Uh, this is a five million dollar uh price tag. Uh, we have about one point three million dollars of general fund reserves. We have about one point three million dollars of general fund reserves identified so far for this project. There is the potential for strategic investment dollars to go towards this project, and again, we're targeting that two point five million dollar reserve level. And then we could use transportation dollars, but again, that's that would be REIT dollars, it'd be my personal preference to find as much general fund funding as we can, I'm taking eighteen million dollars from the arterial street fund is is steep, so we want to make sure that we're able to, you know, address future transportation needs at the same time. Uh, here are two rack projects. One is to upgrade the LED lighting at the rack, this is an energy conservation issue as well as the fact that these lights are fifteen years old now, almost, so that's a one point six million dollar estimate concerned Vasquez.
Do we know how much the investment in the LED lights will actually save us over time?
Um, we don't, but looking at, you know, what we we're experiencing and what we projected in terms of the street LED conversion, we expected to save about half in terms of energy costs. I'm not sure we're.
We could that cost over time.
And also there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars here for vehicle electric vehicle charters there. I will point out that in Senator Campbell's direct spending list, we do have six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for this LED project, but that's very preliminary in in nature at this point, but fingers crossed for that six hundred and seventy five thousand. This is something we haven't really talked about, but we're going to need to, so this number is you know, kind of a kind of a guess at this point, but we're going to have a vacated police station in two thousand twenty five. What we do with that, everything from tearing it down and putting something up in its place, repurposing it to basically mothballing it until we know what to do with it, it's going to cost something. This is, this five million dollars, you know, gives us, you know, at least an idea in terms of repurposing that space or relooking at the central area of City Hall in terms of what that looks like when we repurpose that, so you know, there's definitely next phase of this of this project. And then the final piece of this list is the civic investment at the Quimuth development, so, you know, again, we took that eight million dollars from that that priority from council, you know, again, just want to affirm that the council does want to have some sort of civic presence within that that type of development, so you know, that if we put it on our priority list to replenish that eight million dollars.
When Scott was giving his presentation, it was, I had the sense that we'd get that money, the eight million dollars had come from somewhere that did sort of refill over time, so we anticipated by the time we would be able to invest it, that account would have refilled, where does that funding come from?
That was going to come from future year-end savings. You know, this isn't the year we're going to take, you saw that long list of the monies we're going to use for that ten million dollars in savings, but certainly in the future, I mean, we do take a conservative approach to budgeting, so we certainly hope and we do believe it's the council's priority to replenish that, but you know, that's why we're having this discussion tonight, to kind of affirm that, so in terms of these other commitments, you know, it's about nineteen point seven million dollars total. We have five million dollars of this identified currently, so there's about a fourteen, almost fifteen million dollar gap in terms of what we want to, you know, prioritize.
I mean, that's, I mean, the civic investment in Quimuth is, who knows when at this point?
Sure, and we don't know how much, and and kind of going back to your question, Councilmember Vasquez is is replenishing the reserves and accounts, we're also going to need to look at our capital facilities planning and start creating, you know, the police station's one thing, these are other needs and commitments, but we also have other facilities, and so we need to start building a strategy that's a fifteen-year process, so for example, you you have animal services, you have the shop, you have the senior center, we've been talking about need for expansion because of capacity, it's it's, you know, very well-used. Other parks facilities, and so we're going to need to start looking at what are those improvements, what's the next priority? How are we going to find it and try to create that roadmap? And then underneath that would be more detailed planning of how we replenish these funds and reserves, looking at diff- different revenue sources, year-end savings, as as Troy has mentioned. And, you know, again, replenishing some reserves and preparing for those longer-term expenses.
So your year-end savings this time was ten? Plus or minus?
Sure.
We've got nineteen to cover, nineteen seven.
These are commitments that are out there that are immediate, but we need to plan for and address.
Yeah, we do, we got to replenish them.
Not all these things have to be paid for with year-end savings. Things that have a connection to green investments, right?
Correct, and going going to confrontation about opportunities, there are also, you know, as Troy mentioned, we potentially could get some funding assistance from the federal government on the LED updates, depending on that progresses, we continue to look for grants, partnerships, those other type of things that can help support someone's funding.
The Seventh Avenue and Col Street Roundabout, is that strictly, is that that is that five million dollars, that's strictly our portion? Because that's just our portion, right?
Yes.
Because we did get, that was on the tip for a while.
No, no, it's not on the tip, this is a project that's related to the Midtown and some partnership that's being developed with MJR and St. Martin's Abbey, and we're waiting for St. Martin's Abbey to get final approval to the MOU, then that would become a forward to council for for review.
This is the one that we decided to do to do all three of us together.
Right.
When the when we were talking about the potential sky bridge and all that kind of fun stuff like that.
No, no sky bridge, but the Roundabout, but the agreement would be that, you know.
I might have grandized the project a little bit. We don't have any grant funding built in, baked into that.
No, no, that would be looking at coming out of various, either transportation dollars, other reserves, year-end savings. But partnership is that the the right of way would be donated, we would do the construction cost, and MGR would do some of the perimeter costs of improvements.
Is there a possibility that we could get some grant funding for that project?
Probably not, it doesn't hit the some of the the traditional way of of transportation funding, or visit that criteria, no.
Just trying to get us out, that's all.
So do you need direction from us on this, or is this just?
Just looking for a, if there's any questions or concerns, but if this is a a strategy and approach that the council's comfortable with, we can start moving forward and moving forward with the police station permits and metals.
Are you guys comfortable with what you've seen here?
I mean, I have concerns, we don't have as much money as we ought to have.
You know, I was gonna talk to Troy about the full scope of of the city's reserves. And I didn't want to bring that necessarily into this conversation. But in my estimation, this represents, if my calculations are right, somewhere in the neighborhood of one point eight to two point three percent of that total number. At least what the additional portions that have been brought to us here tonight, so that is the only way I really felt all that comfortable when when we did have this conversation, so that being said, I am comfortable with this forward. But you know, if we have kind of a Carolyn, are you there?
Yes.
Did you want, did you want to? Do you have anything you want to add before we give direction?
Well, I just really want to thank staff for a very thoughtful approach on this, and I think I think you've got about as good a plan going forward as we can have, so yeah, let's go for it.
I think we're all excited about this, and I think we've all seen the need for.
We have.
We gotta do this? Yeah. It will not get cheaper for the way.
You get the difference from a few months ago.
With that, I think you you feel, you feel like you've got the direction that you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, then, it appears as though that is the last item on our agenda, and without if there is no exception or nobody has any anything further to bring, then we are going to call this this city council work session adjourned. No gavel, no keep it classy, just adjourned.